The next item up is our ECCL update, Mr. Baker.
So I'm going to give a brief overview of the construction activities and design activities over the last month since the last board update. First, for our, we have a new board member, just want to kind of, again, refresh everyone's memory on the scope of work. You'll see the layout here, you'll see the community multi-use building, that's Building A. You'll see the building along San Pablo Avenue, which is called Building B. The high school, 9-12 classroom is Building D. The K-38 classroom is Building C. And the renovated gym and community recreation, Building E. So I'll refer to the names of those buildings, just want to kind of refresh everyone's memory which those are. So first, our closeout of solar mediation. This is the remedial action work plan work. If you're called last time reported to the board, the state of California Department of Toxic Substance Control, DTSC, issues partial site approval of areas AOC 1 through 5, which is the entire site except for Building A and a corner of Building C. Consequently, we were able to start grading, site grading, in, at the end of October. And I'll show some photographs of that process, of where we are today on that process. Also, as I've reported the last two updates, there were, the, the raw report issued to DTSC identified some unforeseen materials in the AOC 6 area, the Building A site area. Consequently, we resequenced around Building A so we could start grading. We have not graded the area of Building A. And are seeking separate approval for the Building A site. We're expecting that approval in December. And that, that, that could be late December at the latest, we're hoping for next week, given our discussions with the DTSC official that we're working with. That would conclude the entire process of certification by DTSC that the site is clean of all hazardous soil materials. A now designed and construction update. Where we are with construction? Building E, the gym, the abatement and demolition is now complete in that space. Site grading work is complete, except for, again, for the Building A area. Steel fabrication is in progress with the first batch of steel, which are anchor bolts for Building A, arriving this week on site. And the Building E seismic upgrade is in process. We've done concrete demolition and preparation of concrete for, to receive both shotcrete, which is concrete wall strengthening, as well as anchor bolts. We're doing a number of, of, of added steel and concrete elements in Building E to achieve the seismic upgrade. And site utility work is in progress. It was set to start last Monday, and we had a week of rain last week. We did get some layout work done this week on Monday and a little bit today. But the, the rain has hampered our, our progress on site utility work. The schedule is for that work to complete at the end of December. So keep your fingers crossed. I know we need the rain, but we would like a dry site right now. A design update, the pool design is, the design itself has been completed and reviewed by the, by the city, who is the, the partner who operates the pool. We are currently in the midst of completing the related mechanical, electrical, and plumbing work with the pool. The deadline for the team is to complete the pool construction documents in January 15th. They will be then issued to DSA for approval as a construction change directive. And also Turner will bid that work out. So by late February, we should have both approval from DS, DSA, barring any unforeseen issues with them, and we don't anticipate any. And also, we'll have our numbers in for the pool design. That's a five-month construction progress, so we hope to start that work in March, which would then meet our deadline for completing the pool and gym in August. The health center, we've had a series of meetings. We have, our next meeting is next Tuesday with the, the, the Health Center Working Group, along with Lifelong. Last meeting, the, the group signed off on the plan changes. This coming Tuesday, we will confirm location of all the power and data changes that are going to be required by Lifelong's plan revisions that they've made to the center for their operational use. We'll also have a discussion of the furniture, fixtures, and equipment in the Health Center. Lifelong supplies much of the equipment as part of their operating agreement. And then we'll, following that meeting, we'll also enter into our, enter that data into the reconciliation and revision of our final FFNE plan. The library has been, we've had some minor revisions of the library based on working with a consultant that has met with the city and the district. We've changed the, some planning of the office space, the café, which was deleted in the, as we did our final design changes and value engineering. However, we are stubbing out plumbing for, in that area in case a café wants to be added in the future. But again, there's no, an operator has not yet been chosen for the library, so we anticipate some more changes, but we want to get finalized with the group we have now, the changes, as we're going to be starting construct. We've started construction soon, and that's in Building D, which is the first building to be complete.
So, did you say that you've eliminated the café entirely?
Yeah, the café was, the, the, the working group that finalized the design prior to contract with Turner. We had a number of, of revisions, and the café was one of those that was taken out of the project. We have now more library space in that area.
So it's, it's all been moved to library?
Yes, it's, it's basically, what it was, it was, it was a, a large counter area with kitchen utilities and a seating area. We've now taken that casework out. We're going to leave the utilities stubbed in in case we want to add that in the future, but then that's now more library space.
And just, I was a reminder, I think this is part of the two million, you may have said this, part of the $2 million we value engineered out of the project.
Correct.
And yeah, so each item, the committee did go over, and there was a lot of conversation on each item.
Quite a bit.
And there were a lot of, you know, and we did a ranking system.
Right.
Okay, I guess I, among the, the many details, that one I missed, that the café was no longer going to be part of the, of the project. Which, which, I mean, it was an attractive part for me, just as a community member, to think, and if we want the library to be a public use on the weekends and people to come, you know, it's a nice addition.
And we are, just so you know, we are meeting again, I believe, right after the December holiday, to go back and review the list again. As the city manager and I look to determine what are the highest priority items that we're trying to keep into the project. Also knowing that if the timeline allows, which is one of the reasons we're leaving the utility options there, to change gears again, or change back again, if we can, if the city and district are able to commit some additional funds to some of these value engineering pieces, that we intend to do so.
Yeah, if I can just, the, the city is part, obviously, they're part of the committee, so they're aware and they approve the change.
Yes, we had, that, to refresh everyone's memory, this is what we did, like, in July.
Yep.
There were three representatives from the city and three from the district who were involved in that, in that, that work, those, we had two working sessions, two half-day working sessions. The concerns brought up, the reason why the café was not valued highly by the group was the concern about how it would be operated, that it would be within the library, and there was concern about kids and food and library. And that group really felt that it would be not a, from a, more of an operational standpoint, not desirable to have that facility. And so that was, it was, it was valued low, and then there was cost savings that came with it, and that was an item which was selected.
Yeah. Member Dice?
Well, I was just going to say, I think when, it's one of the attractive parts about that particular program was the fact that in, for Oakland Castle High School, the students run a number of kiosks, it's not one maybe now at this point, I think, Oakland Airport. And I think that's what it was envisioned for this particular café, was to be part of the program, for students to actually be lead and, you know, entrepreneur spirit and whatnot. So I just offer that back to the, the committee, that that had been, you know, one of those things, but that was what, you know, initially was really attractive about the opportunity for students to actually perform, you know, to operate or cooperate with, with the café as it was. So, you know, it would be a wonderful program to add back.
To echo Dr. Rubio's statement, the point I'm making here, actually, is that we, because we're doing underground utilities, we have to put those drain lines in now. We've decided to keep that drain line in there. So we now have more time to make this decision. But I will point out that the committee delegated by the board and by the council to make these decisions, did make that decision back in July. But as Dr. Rubio mentioned, we're going to be finalizing that list in January, because it's sort of our, our, our kind of deadline for making decisions on all, any, any kind of value engineering. So the committee will be reviewing that list once again.
Member Ash?
I was just going to add some notes for the committee to think about, to kind of piggyback off of Melody, if either the school or the city wanted to run a culinary arts program, that is another huge opportunity to have an onsite café. When I got my degree in culinary arts, we ran a café as our final project. So it's just something that I think would be of value.
Well, we'll certainly discuss those comments when we reconvene the group in January to look at the list and make final, some final, final decisions.
Yeah, and the, the, just a final thought, I mean, it, there may be space in the courtyard and/or this space with its drainage for a pop-up café? I don't know, is that a possibility of, you know?
I, I'd have to take a look at kind of site utilities for that. I mean, one of the things is, if you have a café, you usually have a grease trap in the drain, which we would add, which, you know, we're just basically stubbing out, we're stubbing out a drain line so that could be put in the, in the, for there on the project. But we can take a look at what, what those possibilities are. You can always do a kind of temporary pop-up, I suppose, but there's, there's not a whole lot, right now, we don't have the infrastructure to do kind of a more, to kind of a plug-in pop-up with, you know, drainage and electricity for that kind of facility, but, and this is all important stuff, because we're, we're putting site utilities in now, so all that stuff that goes in the ground is going in, in the next month, weather permitting. And so then we, then those are backfilled, and it's hard to make, put those lines in once they're in. The first thing happens before we do building foundations is we get all those underground utilities in throughout the site. So we're getting very close to, in fact, we've kind of passed the point of trying to change site utilities at this, at this juncture of the project.
But you're, you're saying, if we, if we want to go back, you're doing what you need to do now?
In the café and the library, that's correct.
Yeah.
We still have the opportunity to, to make, to change that decision that was made by the committee.
Yeah, and I'm just throwing out a, you know, maybe it is just a temporary roll in the cart on the weekend, some outside provider, or students for some project want to do that, so that, you know, there's ability for, for, you know, to attract the community there on the weekends. But the fact that you're, you're keeping it flexible, I think is a good thing.
All right. Then this is the eight-week look-ahead schedule. I want to point out that you'll see where it says site utilities, the week of the 15th, that's, that's recognizing, starting this, starting, starting next week, because we've been delayed. So this is the very current schedule, which shows that in the Building E, the gym work, the seismic upgrade is starting, the concrete work starts next week, starts next week. Seismic steel work, which are anchor bolts initially, start the week after that. And mechanical, electrical plumbing work, the, the infrastructure, which is called the rough end, in Building E starts first of the year. Site utilities, we got pushed back a week. Street connections, so depending on how we sequence the schedule and depending on the weather, this is, this is the currently anticipated schedule as it stands today for all this work. I want to note that the first la, first layer of asphalt for the parking lot is going to go in as soon as we can, because that provides a parking area for, and a staging area for contractors. And that's anticipated to take place in January. But this is our current look-ahead, so when I do my monthly reports, I'll have this eight-week, what we call a look-ahead schedule, that shows what the upcoming activities are. So this shows our finished grading with-
And that, that eight-week schedule hasn't, judging by your last slide, materially changed the move-in dates?
No, this is, this is the current snapshot. The, the site utility primary lines, they were to have started this week, with layout last week. Now we're doing, we've got, this is the weather, the weather effect of last week's rain is what is shown here.
Right, but the move-in dates are still?
Yeah, the, the schedule, there are weather days built into the schedule.
Right.
About 30 or 40, 30 or 40 weather days are built into the schedule. And so we track those as we go. The only weather days that are awarded are those which impact the schedule critical path. You know, in a wet year, you might have, though, a number of days that do impact that. But the Turner is only able to claim additional days if there, if we have 150% of normal rainfall, 150% of the normal weather days during the course of the project. So obviously, we have to see if we have, if we have two wet years this year and next, and we may have some schedule impacts. If we don't, then we won't. So what we do is we mark, we have a log, we track those weather days. We've awarded seven weather days so far. But again, I think we have 38 total in the project. So, you know, as we go, as we go through the winter, we'll know, we'll, we'll track those days. And if we hit less than 38, there won't be any change in the schedule. So you'll see here shows our site grading complete. It also shows all the, it shows, it's all the water that's sitting on top of it, which is what has hampered our, our progress on site utilities over the last week or so. But you can see that it's, what's called finished grade, where it's, this is, is within, I believe, three inches of the, of what the, of the, of the finished grade before we start doing pads for buildings. But, so that was great progress to make before the rain came. So that's good news, but we're waiting, it's, it's hampering our ability to start trenching through the area for site utilities. The gym, you'll see the demo and abatement is complete. You see the temporary protection over the bleachers. It's all nice and clean now. We've chipped out all the tile in the old restrooms, and so you can see how it's all been cleaned out and ready for new construction. This area here shows an area that we're going to actually fill a slab back in, which will, which is actually partly seismic, because it, it improves the diaphragm, but also it's where we took, we took tile out. So the demo's complete, and now we're starting to drill for anchor bolts and prep for shotcrete sheer walls and things of that nature. We've been working quite a bit also on the furniture, fixtures, and equipment. That program was developed last fall, fall of 2013. Some of the furniture has been purchased and is in the, primarily in the Santa Fe site, some in the Antioch site. The city and district review of the program is now complete. And also, we did a survey Monday before Thanksgiving with stakeholders, teachers, and Dr. Rubio and others, and the design team, to identify which furniture can be moved to the new facility. This effort was supposed to identify, confirm that which has already been purchased, but also identify other items that could be moved and possibly rely, possibly result in some cost savings. We're now trying to schedule a meeting with that, with the, the design team, to update the FFNE program based on that walk and the city and district review of the program. And that will be the first draft of our final procurement document for all of the furniture for the new project. I just want to point out, some of you have seen this, this, I, I will periodically update this graphic schedule, which has been used throughout the history of the project. The items, it doesn't show well, but the items that are supposedly in light green, gray there are complete now, and those in yellow are, are still, are either in progress or are completing. We're still on schedule for the, the three milestones of the gym and pool in summer of 2015, the high school in the fall, and the project in the spring of 2016. And we'll update this periodically, just to kind of show this graphic schedule that people have seen over the, the history of the project. And that is it for the ECCL update for this board meeting.
Questions, comments?
I have one question for you, John. Going back to the design update regarding pool design, health center, and library, those involve some changes to the actual approved documents from the Division of State Architect. In my experience with that, it's been where any change that is warranted by whoever, that DSA will review them again if it has to do with fire, life, safety, accessibility, and structural.
Correct.
Out of these, what do you see those being reviewed by DSA?
So of those, the, the, the library changes, which are, are just moving some walls, we, again, the, the procedure is that the architect and inspector of record review the proposed changes and determine whether or not a construction change directive is issued to the Division of State Architect. And with that is, it's basically, we're changing the permanent set of drawings. The library revisions are, we've not made that determination yet, because they're not done with that design work, but I, I don't anticipate that would need to go in, because we're, we're taking some walls and counter space out. On the health center, we do anticipate issuing that, because we've moved some sinks around, and there's some accessibility issues in regard to casework, so we think we'll need to issue a CCD for that. Although that's really fairly nominal changes. We didn't change any walls. We did change some room uses, where you moved sinks and casework from one room to the other. So we do anticipate we would issue that as a CCD. The pool, because of accessibility, which is a, a change to the project, will be issued. Again, there's, there are no seismic considerations, the pool that I'm aware of, there may be. I'm, I'm not sure if, if DSA reviews seismic for pools, since we're renovating the existing pool. But certainly, accessibility and access around that pool is changing, because we're changing the way you enter the pool with steps, we're taking a diving board out, for example. We're doing a, a revision of the equipment room. So that will certainly go, that will certainly be issued as a CCD.
Okay, and in doing so, you'll be assessed a fee in, per their review, so that, has that been accounted for?
Yes, we have a, a line item for DSA fees in the project budget, and there are some fee, funds remaining. As you also probably were, at the end of a project, DSA likes to see what your value of change orders are, and then they assess you, they assess you an appropriate fee for that increase in the contract value of the work.
And it usually comes down to the, one of the forms that they use, they finalize the numbers on that.
Correct.
And it's be signed by the district representative.
Right, correct.
On the furniture, you say we've made some purchases in that?
Actually, quite a bit of furniture was, I'm sorry.
Here's my question. How much, if you can roughly, of all, you know, 100% of the furniture over there, how much are we taking? What percent are we taking? What percent are we purchasing? What percent have we purchased already? What percent do we have yet to purchase?
I, if I, trying to recall here, we've purchased about, oh, I would say about, about maybe 15% of the furniture. These are, and these are rough order of magnitude. And also, there's probably another 5% of the furniture that we're going to be able to move that was to have been purchased new, but since we've identified some other, some other furniture in the schools that we think we can also use. So I think about 20% of the furniture in the new facility will come from, and the Antioch's and Santa Fe sites. If I had to just hazard a guess.
Okay, and 80% will be purchasing new?
Correct.
And are they, are they going to be, is it going to look like a, like my office stuff? Mix and match of different stuff we, we have, we've put together over time?
No, 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 it is not, it is not, 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 no. But I just want to make, point of clarification. Did you say, I just want to make sure we got the percentages right. Oh, we have, the furniture that was purchased, I, I believe, roughly two, two-ish years ago for the Santa Fe temporary site, is all in very good condition. So we're looking at moving most of that furniture in terms of student desks. The furniture at Antioch's, due to the remodeling of the Antioch's, a majority, high, high majority of the furniture is also in pretty good shape. So I wasn't sure if we got the percentages correct.
Yeah, my percentages, I, I, you know, I, to be honest with you, I'd like, what I'd like to do is do some research into that and report back to the board.
Fair enough.
Because there's the, of the, of the, there's also city furniture, there's, for the whole project, I'm just kind of doing a, I will look into this and report back in more detail at my next board update.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, that's a better way to do it.
Because I believe the Dr. Rubio, it may be quite a bit higher than that, actually.
Because I, I think originally, we were planning to purchase almost all of it, maybe.
That's correct. In fact, the board may recall that our FFNE budget probably was several million dollars. And realizing the fact that we potentially could use still, the high majority, I want to say 80 to 90% of the existing furniture at the two sites, and knowing that we were, we needed to find some cost savings in our budget proposal back in last August, we realized that we needed to reduce this budget, and we probably could logically do so. And so that's kind of where we're at still.
Okay, yeah, yeah, my-
I think the best, the best plan is, again, we're convening the design team between now and next, sometime this week or next week, to revise the list, which has cost figures associated. So we should be very quickly to be able to get accurate figures on both the percentage of furniture that's going to be reused versus new, and also what the cost estimate is for purchase of new furniture. So we're pretty close to being able to get detailed figures for both of those.
Member Dice?
I was just going to state that I know that part of the relocation to Santa Fe site actually included the purchase of furniture, because one, it was a trial to see how that furniture functioned for students and staff, and with the intent that definitely it would move over to the new facility. So I think it was envisioned that, that purchase that was made would ultimately move into the new site. So I think there, there might have been just some anticipation of, and it just worked out that we've already done a bulk of that purchase ahead of time. And that fortunately has become valuable to, to the education, to the program, and that students and staff are able to work with what was purchased in addition to. So I know that Measure J, where the funding source had been for that relocation, as well as the lease for Santa Fe, the furniture as well was part of that, too, so.
It's a good, good reminder of the history, for those of us who weren't around at that point. So yeah, I think, I think that would be great if we could get that, and that, you know, my, and I would like us to try to use as much as, do two things, use as much as we can, and also, you know, make it look integrated and new when we move into a new place.
Absolutely.
Now, like, literally, you know, I work for nonprofit. We've got stuff from 30 years ago, and 20 years ago, and 10, and 5, and 2, and none of it works together. Okay, any other questions?
I have one more. As far as the specific regarding the furniture in the library, was the option investigated per going to, I think it's called SEBEST, as far as ready-made or off-the-shelf, DSA-approved casework for library installations?
In fact, I think what's specified on the list is exactly that.
Okay, great.
I was not involved in the original list, but the, the furniture list was prepared by the architects, and it was exactly that. It was, it was the, it was specified, the stand, DSA pre-approved, DSA pre-approved stack bookcases, et cetera. The, the challenge we have is that we still don't, without the, we, where assumptions made regarding the library operation. The library operation has not been identified, and so that, you know, that program could change. So it's one of the key issues on the project is the need to continue to partner with the city, who's taking the lead on this, in terms of determining who's going to operate the library and what that library program will be. So I would imagine that the, probably the last furniture that we purchased may be, end up being the library. But it's very key that we work with the city to understand who that operator is going to be and how it may impact our program for the construction and the, and the furniture.
Thank you. Member Dice?
I just had a question about the last few nights, Inverville has had a number of people in town, and I recall even last week watching as protesters were coming very close, and they actually crossed the street from the construction site. So I am curious if, if we've had, one, any damage, and two, any protocols that we have in place with local police or what have you, as it relates to, you know, I mean, I was like, please don't go over there. I mean, that's how I was doing it, I was watching it, so.
Right, I, I can, well, John, can you respond to the site? I have something to say about the, the city and the police department.
Oh, we didn't have any, we had no incidents at the site. The, the site is, the, the construction fence is all locked off at night. If one were motivated to climb the fence, and that would be, it's a construction fence, it's not a security fence, other than a six-foot construction fence. There are, I think it's something we will discuss with the construction team. We're, we have protocols in place for, while construction's taking place. The Turner Construction is wholly responsible for site security. Right now, we don't have any material on the site, other than staking, and there's some equipment that's parked there, but as we proceed and have subcontractor boxes and equipment, it'll be more important. One of the, one of the big advantages is we have the gym interior for much of the construction, and then once the gym is complete, we'll be closing other parts of the project. So we have indoor lockable space to keep much of the material, which is helpful. It's not a completely ground-up project, and we have space to do that. And that's, the construction schedule actually is, is, has been created in order to take advantage of that, using that as, as, as storage space as we proceed, which will help out, secure the site much more than if we were starting from scratch and had temporary facilities out there.
I just was going to say, and I think John hit most of it, that I was, I had some recent conversations with some individual officers who had gave, given me an update on some of the areas that had, where some of the protests and some damage had trickled down, and I had- had expressed my concern about the site, and they said they would keep an extra eye out and make some extra runs past the site for us.
Okay. All right. Any public comment on this item? All right, this is just a discussion item. Thank you for the update, Mr. Baker.